We're going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to order stand for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco.
President.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Commissioner Trello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Vandembosh.
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe.
Here. Uh, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, seeing none. Can I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved. Baldwin.
Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve and file the minutes of the February fifteenth, twenty-four commission meeting and the March seventh, twenty-twenty-four standing committee meetings.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. No proclamations. Consent agenda items A through E.
Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda A through E?
Support.
Discussion on any of these? All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number nine, reports of standing special committees. Start with Commissioner Samasco.
No report this evening on standing committees.
David?
Yeah, I had encryption meeting this week and everything's moving forward, but there's going to be a delay due to radio procurement by even the PDs that are going to start, are going to be of the first discipline done. And it could be between, anywhere between nine, six to nine months before we can even test. So, and the fire department, they are doing surveys right now to see which department needs which equipment to even do tests in small areas right now. So there's a couple departments that are ready to go, but as a larger group, we aren't, we're, and we worked on getting some of the legal stuff together for Gary to look over on, for the county side, because we've been looking at Lapeer County and a couple of the other counties that have already went encryption and some of the things they've done and some of the things they wouldn't do again. So, and then we also met with Tina Bricker on some tower sites for, to get some better coverage, both in the flats and around Marine City. So those meetings went really well with the state engineers.
Very good. Joey?
Nothing to see here.
I just have one. So the EDA is receiving a grant for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for what's called blade elimination. And they're looking at six to seven different projects that they would allocate fifty thousand dollars to. So if any of the commissioners, I know I talked to you about something up there in Yale, Steve, I know Commissioner Vandembosh is, you know, working on some stuff with Elginak with the old school. So there's, they're, they're going to try to take the three hundred and fifty thousand and go to the Detroit Regional Prosperity Group and try to get an additional three fifty. So there's possibly seven hundred thousand. If they don't, there is three hundred and fifty thousand for sure. If you have any, I guess, buildings that require some attention, if the townships had anything, any of the cities, those types of things, there's this pot of money that could assist in that. The only caveat is the individuals need to be a member of the EDA, which majority like Yale is and Elginak and so on and so forth. So if there's something that is out there that needs to get put on our radar, radar screen, please let us know.
Question, yeah?
Yes.
So currently it's at fifty, if they get the money from the Detroit group, will they go to a hundred? They double three fifty to seven hundred?
That's the, yeah, that's, that's the ask that they have to correct.
Thank you.
And it can be used for some land clearing, it can be used for, you know, different things. Site readiness, I guess when I said blighted structures, I probably should have, you know, caveat site readiness. So they are looking for stuff. That is it for me. Item ten, any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? I'm sorry? Yeah, she took a pass. Seeing none, unfinished business. Steve, you got?
Yeah, I wanted to mention after the meeting last week, a couple weeks.
Oh, yeah, come on up. Michael Hensley, our new convention, the new Marcy Fogel.
Sorry. Does it look like Marcy Fogel? Good evening, Commissioners. As Commissioner Bohm stated, my name is Michael Hensley. I'm the incoming president and CEO of the Blue Water Area Convention Visitor Bureau. Again, as Commissioner Bohm stated, I'm following Marcy Fogel's footsteps as she plans to retire this year. I've got some pretty big shoes to fill. I've been working hand in hand with her over the last five months in a transition period, so just going through that. And I wanted to formally introduce myself to the Board of Commissioners. I'm excited to represent the travel sector here in Michigan's Thumb Coast, and I would offer my insight or assistance in any projects directly impacting the travel sector here at the county level. Just a little about me, I grew up spending my summers here in the Thumb Coast, in St. Clair County specifically. I've got family in this area, so they're all my most cherished and greatest memories as a, as a kid, as a young adult, happened right here in the Thumb Coast. So very excited to be an impact to the travel sector and help it move further than it already is. So again, thank you for your time, and I just wanted to formally introduce myself.
Okay. Yeah, I talked to Mike the other day, and I said, you know, you're walking into something that is, is, is very well put together, very well run, those types of things. So you're not stepping into a minefield, I guess I sat on that board for, oh, quite a few years. And back then, there was a two percent tax on the hotel nights, so the room, it really didn't generate much money, you know, paid some salaries, was able to do some stuff. They decided to bump that to the, I think it's a statutory limit of five percent. So five percent of the revenue of room nights actually goes into pots of money, and then they're able to do, you know, leverage that with some of the pure Michigan campaigns and some of those other types of things. So, unfinished business.
Yeah, I just wanted to basically, for the other commissioners, Jeff knows I'm going to talk a little bit.
Can you talk into the mic? Yeah.
Sorry about that. After the last meeting, you know, we had our waste stream study from the landfill and our water testing reports from the landfill, and the waste stream study was very interesting, and I did some follow-up on it. So in cell eight, lift number four, about ten feet under the surface of landfill, there's a mona material that came from Domtar. And the material is, I've been identified, they did a schedule that showed, they went from January first of eighteen to twelve of twenty-three, looked at all the waste streams, and they came up with a, with a chart that showed the one, everything else is kind of out of the question, but that was the waste stream. And then on further analysis, there was, I looked at a special characterization form, they call it a special waste stream form, they thought landfill. And then the problem I had, or the issue I had, the material came into the landfill, and there was a lot of it. It came in from January to twenty-three, from January twenty, twenty-one to twenty-three, about thirty to forty roll-offs of this material. It was paper sludge, paper mill sludge. So it comes in the landfill, and I looked at the form to see what this was, and the form has, you dare characterize what it is by properties, and then it's not, it's not a PCB, it's not a medical waste, it's not, you know, this and that. Well, there was nothing really that said what it was, other than none of the above. So I look at the bottom, and it says, where was the waste stream tested? It says in roll-off box. So I, I called Matt, and the reason I had a concern was, the material from Domtar had been going out to Technicomp. And Technicomp is a poor here in township facility that was shut down by the Attorney General, and the material had polluted the Huff drain, there was problems with it, large fines were paid, the paper company went out of business. So at the time, that material was landfillable, it was the most quote appropriate place pursuant to Eagle, was the landfill, and it was in St. Clair County, so it kind of had to go to the landfill. So a couple of issues. One, we have it in the landfill, it does have PC, does have a PFOS, PFAS, and PFOA, which are two kinds of different PFOS compounds. And I just want to make sure, and I've worked with Matt a little bit about it, and I'm making sure that we know where it's at and it's going to stay where it's at and so forth, kind of like asbestos we have. One cell has asbestos, it's in a lion's cell, it's been there forever, it's not going any place. So I just want to make sure we're on top of that, number one. The other thing is, I, I did let Gary know that I felt that when, when Eagle sent that material to our landfill, stopped it going from Technicomp and it went into the landfill, that caused Technicomp then to sue the Domtar for the pollution of their facility. I wanted Gary to look at, and I don't know how anyone else feels about it, I want Gary to look at the possibility, maybe we should look at that from a county standpoint. Do we need to be involved in that litigation to say, now that it's in our landfill, and then what Domtar did, or whoever the hauler was, when they brought it to Technicomp, it was self-declared to be inert, and it wasn't. To me, that's, that's a fraud, that's an environmental tort. And then when it came to our landfill, again, when it says tested prior to entering roll-off box, I called Matt. Again, it was self-declared by, by Domtar or the waste hauler, essentially not to be toxic material, and I think that's, that's, that's not correct, I don't think that's true. So I just want to make a record of that and maybe have some discussion. I asked Gary to look at it ten days ago, I haven't heard anything back. I can't give him projects to work on, but I think, I think we need to look at that. Number one, see if we need to get involved with that litigation, or, and then also our waste stream, make sure maybe we were testing special waste coming in, because PFOS is ubiquitous to society. It's in straws, it's in Gore-Tex, it's in everything, you know, it's a material, waterproof material. But this paper sludge is a recycled material, was over and over and over again, so it's concentrated, there's a lot of it. And if you, PFOS is, you know, forever chemical, it's not, it's certainly toxic, and if we don't, you know, keep an eye on it, we could have a problem. I know we pre-treat our LEJ to send it to a wastewater system. I just want to make sure, I can't do this, you know, we can't do it on our own. Maybe get Matt involved or have some kind of, you know, something we can look at, so we have people on top of it. And then just on that point, I did reach out to Dr. Nevin and the Health Department, Liz King as well. They actually had a meeting, based on what I sent them, and they responded back, and Dr. Nevin put my, allayed any fears I had. He said, there's no, no health risk now. He said, we need to look at it. PFOS regulation is an emergent thing in the industry. He wants to learn more about it. So I just want people to know we're looking at it, and if it becomes an issue, I mean, in the, you know, community information gets out, I thought it was a good place to put that out now, that we've looked at it, we've kind of got, we're on it, we're looking at it. I told Jeff about it, I sent to our administrator. I didn't copy the commissioners, because it was kind of long, but if there's more information you want, Matt knows, he's looking at it, and that's what I wanted to do here today.
I guess while we're on landfill, yes, we should have Gary take a look at it. And then I think, Gary, you were telling us today that the monitoring systems just went in?
Yes, the air quality monitoring that the county's doing has been in for a little over a week, maybe two weeks now. So we're able to get those readings, and we'll be getting those reports from TatraTech and putting them on our website.
We put that, we put that in place like December, didn't we, or November? When did we start going down that road with that?
So we did a two-week monitoring period last year. After reviewing the results with TatraTech, we realized that the equipment provided didn't measure down to a low, a low enough part per billion that we needed. So they're actually repeating the two weeks for us that, that we had already purchased, but then we had wanted a longer contract, because we want to be able to monitor those levels, track the progress of the improvements we're making.
And then how does the Health Department, how do you guys communicate from like administration or landfill to health, or how does that, do we have something in place to make sure everybody sees this stuff as it comes up?
So the levels are posted on the state website. So far, there's nothing that has been over any allowable range. The levels are much lower than they were, so there's no, there's no level that's triggering a concern that would have the Health Department involved at this point. You know, certainly we're, we share, can share whatever information with them, but there's no, there's no levels that are triggering that acute level risk that the state has set at the seventy parts per billion.
This notice of enforcement action, we had these notice of violation, now notice of enforcement action, that's the next level, kind of, anything on that, Carrie, as far as what they're looking for, how does, where do we go with that? Is that something Fletcher handles or?
Matt and I are working with legal counsel, and we are getting the initial meeting set up with Eagle.
Okay, and then they'll tell us maybe a little bit more what they're looking for, what the issues are?
Yeah, then we'll, we'll start discussions.
Thank you.
Okay, any other unfinished business? Moving on to new business, item A.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve county disbursements for the month of February twenty twenty-four in the amount of twenty-six million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item B.
Yes, at this time, I would move to approve the revisions to policy one hundred dash one twenty-one for approval of contracts.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt policy one thirty-nine, requesting a reasonable accommodation.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt policy one forty, the nondiscrimination and discrimination policy in limited English proficiency plan.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item E.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty, twenty-four contract for veteran affairs with WGRT for radio advertising in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. All right. Item F.
This time, I would move to approve the Michigan Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant Agreement for the Health Department for a term of January first of twenty-four through nine fifteen of twenty-four in the amount of forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Support.
Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item G.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint to the Community Mental Health Board Jessica Totti in District Three, Edwin Premier in District Five, and Dawn Davy in District Seven, each for a three-year term expiring March thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item H.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the increase in funding for the Veterans County Burial Benefit from six hundred dollars to a thousand.
Support.
Discussion. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item I.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Emily Vinkier Pierce to the Community Mental Health Board as District One Representative for three-year term expiring March thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item J.
This time, I would move to approve the Food Service Operating Agreement with Airmark Correctional Services LLC for the Intervention Center for a term of one, one twenty-four through one thirty-one of twenty-eight.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item K.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Airmark Correctional Services for Commissary for the Intervention Center for a term three, one twenty-four through three, twelve thirty-one, twenty-eight.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item L.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero four, placing the proposed renewal of the drug task force millage on the ballot.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item M.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum to the agreement with Carpal Solutions, adding the custom interface E-file in the amount of twenty-five thousand and the annual maintenance fee of five thousand.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item N.
This time, I would move to approve the contract with Guardian for RFID technology for the Intervention Center using ARPA funds allocated for the internal county projects in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars with an option for three, one-year renewal at twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five per year.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item O.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Property Fraud Alert Service Agreement with Fiddler Technologies for the Register of Deeds using Commissioner District Two American Rescue Act funds in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and an annual maintenance fee in the amount of two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Support.
Discussion.
I'd just like to say that Bruce Francick and Clerk Angie Waters have done a great job on getting this proposal together, and when they first started looking at it, I think the first one was maybe thirty thousand dollars, and then working with IT and working with the vendors have gotten it down to twelve thousand, two fifty. I sat through a demo of a couple of them, and this, this one was way more user-friendly, I think, even than that first one that we sat through. And if we tested it, there's a telephone number that if you have questions while you're using the system, you can call and someone answered, and she was able to answer all the questions. So it was very user-friendly, because I think this system especially has a demographic that might need assistance, but this also allows for a telephone call. The other system that was more expensive didn't have a phone call option to let you know if something was registered in your name. So this one has a telephone call option as well as email and text. Good job to those, that department.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item P.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional liability coverage with Alta Pro for the public defender's attorneys in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four, a term of eight, or three, one twenty-four through two, twenty-eight, twenty-five.
Support.
Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item Q.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Master Services Agreement with Paymentus Corporation for the payment platform for the court management system software for a seven-year term.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item R.
This time, I would move to adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero three, which places the proposed millage for road improvement on the August twenty twenty-four ballot.
Support.
I'll let Angie catch up here for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item S.
Yes, sorry. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Survey and Remonumentation Grant Agreement in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars for the term of January first of twenty-four through December thirty-first of twenty-four.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item T.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Tetra Tech for air monitoring at the landfill for a term of ninety days in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes. Item U.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of the FLARE rental agreement with LFG Technologies for a term of two, ten, twenty-four through five, nine, twenty-four in the amount of fifteen thousand.
Support.
Uh, discussion. Since we're talking landfill, I did speak to Biomass the other day, the head of that, they're reviewing all the gas information that was sent to them, and they're looking at kind of what next steps are going to be, so. Have we officially notified them under the provision of the contract? Have we done that? We've talked about it.
Yes.
We have done that. Is this part of that discussion that maybe? Yeah, yeah. Really what you see in the world today is they either, like in Riverview, for example, which has a large landfill, they were doing the electric generation before. They've actually flipped them to RNG, the renewable natural gas. So just depending on, you know, we don't know what we're going to look like yet. Either put a generator in or they flip it over to that. Well, this was just to cross the T dot the I thing because under the contract, as you know, we give them the notice. They have so much time to verify and then come to the table where we can shop it. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, and we had good gas curves. CTI put, you know, and I think a lot of commissioners saw the different projected gas curves and so on and so forth. So they got a good data to work off. We started looking into that last November, actually. You know, we weren't sure what we had, but then now we know what we've got. So that's a roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item B.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the landfill groundwater monitoring contract with WSP Michigan Incorporated for the Smith Creek and the Thomas Road landfills for the term of April 1st of '24 through March 31st of '27 in the amount not to exceed[660.32][660.40]$116,840.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item W. Hold this mine. Sorry about that. I would move to approve with Eastern Technologies to rebuild a primary effluent pump for the Lichea pre-treatment facility at the Smith Creek landfill in the amount of $13,700.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
X.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to purchase of the hydrogen sulfide scrubbing system from IntraGlobal in the amount of $121,800, eliminating the VAV rails, ladder, guard, and toe kick from the proposal.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item Y.
This time I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-05 placing proposal for an additional parks and recreation millage on the ballot.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Item Z.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of 18 chairs for an intervention center from standard office supply in the amount of $7,418 using ARPA funds allotted to internal county projects.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
AA. This time I would move to approve District 3 American Rescue Plan projects for the City Port Huron for the Pine Grove Park Accessibility Project in the amount of $100,000 and a Discovery City Children's Museum in the amount of $200,000.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
These were ones that had been approved, right? She's not here.
Correct, yes, yep.
BB.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the District 4 American Rescue Plan project for the Port Huron Township for the installation of an extension of the Bakersfield pathway in the amount of $300,000.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
CC.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve District 4 Rescue Plan project for Port Huron Township, removing and upgrading two floating piers at the Thompson Pond Park in the amount of $150,000.
Support.
Discussion, a dumb question, where's the Thompson Pond Park? I'm sorry?
40th Street.
Okay.
Still nothing?
Okay. It's not in St. Clair, Jeff, don't worry about it. I've just never heard it. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
DD.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the District 2 American Rescue Plan project for Presbyterian Villages of Michigan for the Lake Huron Woods Campaign for the Age's Housing Project in the amount of $150,000.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item EE. This time I would move to purchase of the Pure Storage SAN-C50 and X20 Expansion, which we all know what that is, in the amount of $369,727.76 using ARPA funds previously allocated to internal county projects.
Support.
Discussion. This question to Carrie, that's, is that cloud storage? Is that what that is?
Uh, no, that is onsite storage.
Oh, it is? Okay. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
FF.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the requested revision to the public guardians manning table, eliminating two part-time assistant case manager positions and creating one full-time case manager position.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item GG.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the revision to the sheriff's office manning table, reclassifying the Marine Patrol Training Sergeant to Lieutenant.
Support.
Discussion.
This is a good thing for Sheriff's Department. Right now they have a great sergeant and making him a lieutenant and keeping him in the Marine Division, which he's worked so well with the communities in the South, and sometimes they've been at odds with each other, and the cooperation I'm seeing down there between Clay Township, Elginak, and Ira on the water is going to be really important now with the Coast Guard with their limited, their quote-unquote limited help or no help.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, item HH.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve District 7 American Rescue Plan projects for Clay Township Police Radios in the amount of $60,000.
Support.
Discussion, I would like to just thank Mr. Vandemash for staying up on the radio thing because we're going to be doing some stuff in St. Clair, and I know a lot of these guys are chomping at the bit, probably more so on the fire, and to get radios, not that we're not committed, but we got to make sure we do it at the right time.
Absolutely.
Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item Aye, aye.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Electronic Recording Commission grant for the Register of Deeds in the amount of $12,000.
Support.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Boe?
Yes.
Item 13, Administrator's Reports.
Earlier this month, I got a report from our invasive species specialist regarding spongy moths. As you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we had well over 800 complaints. The county had invested some funds in some air suppression, and now this year we only had 27 complaints. They went out and did the surveys, and it appears that we should not have any or very minimal activity this year, so it looks like those efforts have paid off, and hopefully we're back in that dormant 20-year cycle. So that's good news.
Do you see the new things that just, I'm not going to say they're new, but they haven't been around for a long time, and they're really loud, I guess. I just was watching it on the news. I can't even, I'm not even going to do you any justice to tell you what the bug is, but it's coming back for the first time in, like, for a long time. So you're going to see those. They're not, they don't wreck trees or do any of that other stuff. They just make noise. I guess they make a lot of noise. I just watched it on the news. They make noise and breed, that's it? Yeah.
So, you know, the general fund does fund half of this position, and it's shared with parks, so if the board has other invasive species initiatives that they feel would be appropriate for this position to help with, certainly we can redirect those efforts since it looks like we won't have any spongy moth activity this year. Last week, or two weeks ago, I met with 123net along with RISA to discuss their bead application for their broadband project. What they're looking for some assistance with is the challenge period is going to open up here very quickly, the end of this month, and what that is, is for those homes that are listed on the federal map that shows that they have service, but perhaps they don't, or they're underserved, they can go ahead and fill out that challenge. I'm working with Metro Planning to, and their individuals that work on broadband, to get information out so they can, we can start putting out some public information and also share that with all of the townships and local communities on what the challenge process is and how to do it. Also, in addition to that, the county does have a broadband committee that has not met, I believe, since pre-COVID, so we would like to get that committee back up and active, especially with all of the different projects going on and the bead funding that's coming up. The last two weeks, we have been going through the prequalification process for landscape architects. As you'll recall, we did our regular architects and our engineering firms to have our prequalified list. However, landscaping was not included in there. It typically is mostly park and rec projects, but occasionally we would have other building projects. So what we're trying to do is get all of these prequalifications on the same cycle, so we'll be looking at doing a prequalification of these for two years instead of five years, and then when the cycle comes back around, we'll have one list for all departments, and park and rec will no longer have their separate list.
Carrie, how does that work now? What's the advantages in that?
So what we do is we did a request for qualifications, and firms can apply, and we go through an interview, and what we do is prequalify them. So when a project comes up, instead of having to issue a full-blown RFP out on mitten to everyone, we can reach out to these, the five on our list, and they can go ahead and bid on each project. So it does, it streamlines the project going forward, gives us some consistency when we're pulling from a pool of five. You could have, you know, 30 different architects bid on every project, so it's worked quite well for us. We've been using this process for quite some time.
To be quite honest, Steve, it eliminates some of the not-so-good ones. Yeah, my only concern is, you know, people that might not see this initial request to get on the preferred list that might want to do a project. Does that in any way limit the ability of other, you know, people in the community to apply? Is it become like a closed list at that point?
Yes, once, for those landscape architect projects, or in the instance of our architects or engineers, it only goes out to the ones on the prequalified list.
How often, how often are we going to reopen that, annual, semi-annual? People might come in and?
It's a five-year cycle.
Five years?
It's a very long, time-consuming, extensive process to do it, to review the bids. You know, we probably had about nine hours' worth of interviews going through this, plus evaluations.
What happens if we get, it's like an elevator company that comes in and we find out we don't like them after a year, and they're on a forward list? You see what I'm saying? How do we keep it fungible? How do we keep it?
Well, we haven't had that happen in the 20 years we've been doing this process, and if we go through the prequalified list and there's five on there, if there's one that we haven't worked with, they do a job for us, we're not happy with that, then we don't have to select them in the future for any future bids, but we would still have the others on the list.
Okay, thank you.
The other RFP process that is, that I'm working through is the IT assessment that I spoke of last month. Those bids are back. We're going through the review process to determine who we would like to interview, and a recommendation will be coming to you hopefully in May. The bids were greatly varied in what we received back. There was a price range of $40,000 all the way up to $250,000, but in reading the bids, some of them seemed to understand the scope of work a little bit better than others, so. And as part of our normal process, we're going through our policy review. You'll probably remember several years back, you had a ton of policies coming to you as a matter of housekeeping. We try to get those on a regular schedule now that we review them every few years to make sure that everything is current, so in a few months, you'll see another round of policy adjustments and updates coming to you.
Carrie, on that point, remember the consent agenda cutoff money? Did we ever, I raised that a couple of years ago. Did we fix that?
You actually approved that policy change this evening.
Oh, we did, okay. You missed it, okay, thank you.
And that's all I have tonight.
Any questions for Carrie? Any miscellaneous business to come before us? Oh, I'm sorry, motion to receive and file administrator's report.
Someone Baldwin?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, no miscellaneous business? I've got something, Jeff, on that. Unmiscellaneous, Jeff, real quick.
Yeah.
You know, with the landfill, I just noted, just a quick Matthew, the five things, we had a landfill, it was like $302,000 worth of money towards the landfill. I just wanted to kind of point that out, that we're still putting money in the landfill on the issues that were raised this last several months. The other thing is, on this enforcement, notice enforcement, you know, I was a prosecutor for 20 years, and I did a lot of the environmental crime stuff in the prosecutor's office. I would like to be part of this, whatever team, whatever group we have looking at this enforcement action. I look at some of what Eagle's done, especially with technocomp and how some of the material in the landfill, I think of things like clean hands and different theories, legal theories. I would really like to follow that closely. I'm interested in seeing that it's done right, not that I can do it right, but I'm very, I'd be willing to participate to whatever degree I could to be part of as a group or how you're going to do that, but I've got some opinions on it, and I'd like to get as much information as I can because it's really important for all of us, that this landfill is operated correctly, that we protect the public. We're all on the same page with that, and I think I can actually help with that, and I've got, I'd like to be frontline on that if possible, and I don't know how we're putting it together. I would just say Carrie and talk to Carrie and talk to Matt. I'm not familiar with process or any of that stuff, how the Eagle enforcement piece of it works, so. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts, you know. I'd like to, I went to the meeting where they had like 23 regulators, and I learned a lot. I learned a lot about what they say, what they don't say, how they do it. I learned a lot, and the landfill, you know, the issues we had with the material coming in and causing this odor problem, that landfill sat quiet for years and years and years and years, and all of a sudden it's a problem, and now we've had notice violations and enforcement, quite frankly, from an agency that's permitted things, an agency that's directed materials there, I'm not real happy with that, you know, and if it gets in front of a circuit judge, I'll bet there's some circuit judges wouldn't be real happy with Eagle either. I want to work with them. I want to make sure we get it done right for public safety, but I want to look at it, and so I'm interested in. So that's, to whatever degree I can do that, I'd like to get involved with that, so. No, and I agree, and it's put us in a, you know, tough position as commissioners because it wasn't anything intentional on our end, right? I mean, they send you this load of stuff. Well, they sent 40 roll-offs. Well, yeah. We accepted that material for many years, and maybe it's different material, I don't know, because I called Matt. I said, why would we accept something that's not tested at the landfill? We don't have a policy to test it coming in. We take a form, they fill it out and say, let me dump my stuff. You know, I think we need to look at that, right? So, you know, and the waste stream issue and permitting these special waste streams to come in, I think we need some policies on that, and I don't know if that's all Matt's decision or the board's decision or Carrie's decision or who's decision, but I feel strongly about that, and I know that a lot of the public does too, so I'd like to see, I'd like to get that moving in some official manner so we don't just kind of wait for something to happen. We're going to try and make something happen, get way, get ahead of it. I think we're getting ahead of it. I'd like to stay ahead of it and make sure we do it right, so. Okay, any other miscellaneous business, receive and file?
I make a motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.